All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is seven o'clock. We will call to order the Monday, October 9th, regular session of the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission. Can we have a roll call?
Yes.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
All right. Thank you. We received a copy of an agenda tonight. Are there any changes? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Fetalco. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Chambers. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, great. We also received minutes from our September 7th, 2023 meeting. Were there any questions, comments, edits? If not, can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion by Burgess, second by DeSenzo. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Any communications and announcements?
No communication. Commissioner DeSenzo has some questions in regard to the education material provided by the response earlier this afternoon. And the announcement, our office sent out a doable in regards to a joint meeting for training between the Planning Commission and that extension committee in the zoning board for December. We would ask that everybody complete that doable so we can nail down the date.
Can you repeat that one more time?
In early December, we sent out some dates in regard to a potential training opportunity between the zoning board of appeals, for the zoning board of appeals, natural feature protection review committee and planning commission.
Thank you very much. Great. No other communications and announcements. We'll move on to public hearings. We've got two public hearings tonight. I know they'll take two separate motions and two separate decisions. Are we going to combine these into one presentation? Or are we going to do these as two separate distinct items?
I've set it up as one long presentation. If you prefer, I can make it one presentation. They're very similar, except I give a four-block kind of overview at the beginning of the first one. Otherwise, up to the commission decides. They want me just to do one, that works just as well. One presentation, not one hearing.
But question for the city attorney, do we need to have two public hearings?
You'd still open two public hearings.
We'd open two public hearings. Okay. Okay. So we'll, I will open these as two separate things, understanding that your presentation on the second one may be truncated accordingly. Okay. So we will have two public hearings tonight. Just as a reminder to the audience, if you want to speak tonight, you'll have an opportunity to on each of these items. Please come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please write your name on the little board up there so we make sure we spell it right in the minutes. And also, please state your name and address when presenting. For those of you watching online, we will also give you an opportunity to speak at the conclusion of those comments by those in attendance. That phone number is 888-382-9556. So call in and we'll call on you at the time during those public comment, during that public comment opportunity. If you have comments on non-agenda items, there will be an opportunity later in the agenda as well. So we'll start with a presentation from staff, then we'll hear from the applicant, and then we'll have the public comments. So we will open PC 2023.06, a request to vacate Cooley Street between Eleanor Street and West Kalamazoo Avenue.
Thank you, Chair Milliken. And I'll have the presentation up. I can always go back to slides if there's any questions from the commission or the public. So the first request of two in front of you tonight is in regards to a request to vacate Cooley Street, which is over there in the northwest portion of downtown, specifically the segment between West Kalamazoo Ave and Eleanor Street. And the image there is the road from the original plat, which dates to 1845. So to put this specific request into context of some information, which because of timing, it takes to update maps and records, it isn't fully reflected on the GIS. Last year, in 2022, the portion of Cooley Street south of Eleanor, between Water Street was vacated. That was done in support of a request to develop those two southern parcels south of the creek. When that road was vacated, the northern portion was obtained by CD Arena, and they own the portion from the creek up to Eleanor. And the entire former right-of-way has an access easement for maintenance to the creek and the DDA for the trail, as well as easements for the utilities underneath the street. And then the segment north of Kalamazoo Ave has currently been enveloped into the development of the new integrated services building. In 2018, that segment between Kalamazoo Ave and the railroad to the north was vacated and has since been absorbed into the parcel to the north owned by Kalamazoo County. And to separate the requests, staff, you know, thought best to process them for each right-of-way as their own separate hearing. And you can see water at the bottom of the street. West Nidge is there on the left side. That's the west park. To the east on the right in Kalamazoo Ave to the north. Now, the intent in the application from the applicant is to assemble land in preparation of an arena development. So to put that full context here, but knowing that there's no, you know, plans to, you know, the exact plans of that development, I wanted to provide an overview from the four-block page within the survey. There was more details on the survey within the staff report. And what you can see here is the Cooley request is in red, the Eleanor request is in blue, and there's a green segment there. Commissioner DeSenzo noted in the application, there was a reference to a request to vacate a portion of alley. So while we're focused up there at the north or the top of the page, at the south end where the creek runs was the original platted alley. The creek itself is pretty much where that alley was. In 2018, the city commission and planning commission, from what I could tell due to an unclear title, vacated the alley to the east of the former Cooley Street. So that portion of land is known and is owned by CD Arena. The southwest quarter there, the applicant has a purchase agreement from ACW1S. They expect to take title to that pretty soon. So that's why some of the survey information did not include it, which would then include that portion there. In order to vacate a street per the policy, you need a letter of support from any impacted owner. ACW1S provided a letter of support. However, 231 Cooley is shown as a portion within that alleyway owned by the DDA, and the DDA would have to provide a letter of support in order for that request to move forward. With that information, the applicant still sought to move forward these two requests. If a letter of support is obtained from the DDA, my understanding is that application would then, the applicant would move forward with that application. And then the purple there is the vacated Cooley Street. And depending how deep somebody got on those surveys, I also included a hash there to show the path easement. The KRVT trail goes through there. There's pedestrian access through there, and that is shown along the north of the creek there. And there's a seven-and-a-half-foot wide segment along the side of West Nidge there. So I thought that was helpful to put the big picture into play of what's been vacated and what is being sought for vacation today. So to narrow it back down to this specific request, right here, we have a view of Cooley Street looking south from Kalamazoo Avenue. On the left or the east would be the Kalamazoo County parking lot. That's where the county has their staff park. And there's also a lease agreement for people from the cancer center to use some of those spaces. And off to the west there, or the right side of the screen, is construction staging. And this is in the intersection of Cooley and Eleanor, looking back north. You could see off in the distance, there's a dumpster enclosure at the far end of Cooley within the county site. And you see those same land uses just flipped on the other side of the screen there. Looking at the zoning of the impacted areas around it, you can see that the eastern and southern portions of the four blocks are Zone D2, and the northwest quarter is Zone D3. In the event, if these are approved and assembled into one parcel, the zoning ordinance classifies the zoning district of a parcel as the majority of the land area. So if there wasn't a zoning amendment to extend that D3 further to the northwest, I'm sorry, the D2, then the parcel would be Zone D2. An indoor sports and participation and assembly are both a permitted use in the D2 zone district, which would support the potential arena development. And you can see to the north, D3, and to the west, D3. And as a reminder, the intensity of, well, development intensity gets higher from D1 being the highest intensity. That's your Kalamazoo Mall and Michigan Avenue corridor. D2 is a lower sense of density to put in a simple way, and then D3, you know, is an even less so density as you create like a donut effect of density around downtown. The existing land use is classified here as well. Again, it may not be completely up to date, because you can see the Kalamazoo County parking lot is shown as vacant. That would be considered commercial today. And the blue icons you see where the vacated streets are was our GIS coordinator making a shape for us to make these maps. It's not really a land use classification. And the rest of it is commercial or vacant. I saw one of the buildings at the northwest corner over there getting demolished just today. And the future land use map shows all of the land around it as downtown zoning, which the zoning has already been done to line it up with that. And lastly, you can see here is another aerial that's a little bit dated. You do not see the developed county parking lot in it, but all of the survey documentation was up to date and reflected that. Something to point out, with this is the 411 West Kalamazoo Ave parking lot, the vehicular access is to Eleanor and Cooley Street. The owner, CD Arena, has a purchase agreement to provide parking until such time that the parking is no longer needed. So one of the conditions staff is requesting is an easement for utilities. With that, we are asking for an easement to be provided for surface access. And before I go into the rationale of staff recommendation, I should talk about underneath both right-of-ways are water, storm, and sanitary infrastructure. Obviously, you could not develop a building with that, those items under there. The engineers on behalf of the applicant in the city have had a couple of preliminary utility relocation meetings, understanding that this would be being sought. And the plan through some upgrades already planned would be to generally put it within West Nidge and Water Street, and the new pipes being put in would increase the capacity, increase the reliability, increase the level of service. And those early coordination meetings are occurring now before an eventual permitting to remove and then relocate and put online the public utilities within there. There's four private utilities within the same right-of-way, Consumers Gas, Consumers Electric, Charter Communications, and AT&amp;T. We've received one sign-off from Consumers Gas, and I believe they've been in contact with Consumers Electric, and the applicant may have more information on the other two. We've included private easements or private utilities to be included within that easement. Because of the timing, if the street vacation is approved, there's a, you know, a 60-day timeframe. It looks for the closing to occur after a city commission decision. Knowing that these utilities would still be in service and be needed in the surface access, there's an understanding that the owner, if these are vacated, would then have to terminate and remove these easements at a future date to cover the timing, you know, large utility relocation, size development, land assembly. That's why we are asking for the condition of the easements be put in place to cover whatever that amount of time may be that those are in place. So access, maintenance, and everything else necessary. In a sense, it's a de facto way of leaving it open until such time they're removed and offline. So to summarize the more detailed staff rationale, I'll go through these real quick. The applicant owns all of the adjacent parcels and intends to combine them into a single parcel. Each parcel maintains its adjacency to a public right-of-way outside of the Cooley Street right-of-way frontage. And to summarize, these items come from within the application. There's a series of questions for an applicant seeking to vacate, and in 2020, the city adopted the current street vacation policy, which outlines the process. In regards to the access for the existing parking lot at 411 West Kalamazoo Avenue, that will be maintained if vacated. The applicant has agreed to a condition to provide surface access in the easement and is bound by the purchase agreement, which they've provided all those documents with the county. The city departments have reviewed the request and are in support of the request. That goes to the Public Services Department, the Assessor, Community Planning and Development, Public Safety. The city will perform coordinated infrastructure improvements to partner with the public utility routes, which will result in an increased capacity for the water and sanitary. The eventual development of the site would have to follow the city's stormwater performance standards, and all of these would also have Eagle Review and Regulations tied to it as well beyond the city's approval. The coordinated upsize will benefit all system users and future growth beyond even the proposed project. This work will occur prior to the final paving of the two-way conversion of Kalamazoo Avenue. So in addition to the complexity of moving utilities in a 180-year-old section of town, the clock is going on Kalamazoo Ave. I believe that's 2025, maybe 26, 25. The stretch of Cooley north and south of this block had been vacated previously, limiting any connectivity that this portion leaves in place. This is not a high-traffic street, and it's classified as a neighborhood street. And there's sufficient street capacity in the surrounding area if this street is vacated. This has been evaluated with the traffic, city traffic engineer in regard to the current road layout and the proposed two-way conversion work. And this action by the planning commission will make it possible for the city commission to proceed with reviewing and voting on the formal vacation of this portion of the Cooley Street right-of-way. I will pause there if there's any questions. The Eleanor Street is the next portion of the presentation.
Any questions on Cooley Street for staff? No? All right. Well, we'll hear from the applicant then. Thank you, Bobby.
Good evening. I'm Mike Elston with Catalyst Development. As outlined in our applications, our affiliate company, CD Arena LLC, is requesting that a portion of Eleanor and Cooley Streets be vacated by the City of Kalamazoo. The requested street vacations are needed to combine the street parcels with the adjacent parcels of land currently owned or under contract by CD Arena to create a single contiguous construction site for a new approximately 360,000-square-foot state-of-the-art arena. Also present tonight, to help answer any questions you may have regarding our applications, are Steve Looney from the Project Architects firm Tower &amp; Pinkster, Tim Stewart from our engineering firm Hurley &amp; Stewart, and our legal counsel, Jordan Shaw of Hull Parfett &amp; Shaw. We ask for your support in approving our application and moving it forward to the city commission for final approval. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much. Then at this time, we will open the public hearing on the vacation of Cooley Street. Anyone in the audience wanting to speak to this, please come forward, state your name and address, and share your thoughts.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Iris Potter. I live at 1204 Manor Street. Once again, certainly many people probably have spoken to you about this, but CD Arena comes here tonight with a proposal and asking for control of those streets. I think, we hope, that you may take a look at this and take the will of the people who have spoken against the arena into consideration, because really, CD Arena is coming in and asking a lot. They've already asked you a lot. So I encourage you to take the idea of what they want with the whole idea of the arena and take that into consideration. Thank you.
Seeing no one else. Is there anyone online?
Nope, no calls at this time.
All right. Then we will close the public hearing on Cooley Street. Are there any clarifying questions?
Is there any need for any conditions on our approval, given the complicated nature of it all?
From the staff recommendation, and Bobby, you can clarify this, it appears two have been recommended. One, a condition that easements for public and private utilities be provided, and that, so I don't know if this is one or two, and that those easements include surface access be maintained to other public rights-of-way for the county staff parking at 411 West Kalamazoo Avenue. Everyone understand what that means? Everyone, any questions on those?
I have sort of a process question. Are we going to vote on this request before the next request? Okay.
If, I think we have to vote on them separately.
Right. We vote separately. But are, we're going to vote on this one before we hear and talk about the next one. Okay. And then I have some questions. Sorry.
Go ahead. Yes.
Was there any public comment that you received for this or this one, or either one? Thank you. And can you talk about the decision not to pursue public engagement on it?
There it is. Oh, I don't have a button. If memory serves me correctly, it may have been through the process in the, you know, I remember meeting with the applicant about the public participation policy, and they had pointed out within the policy, for street vacation, there's actually an asterix. And if the, determined by the city traffic engineer not to impact traffic patterns is the language, and I believe probably Jordan or Tim, through, you know, picked up through the utility coordination meetings, posed the question, hey, these sound like they're pretty minor streets. Does this apply to us if we're not impacting traffic patterns? So then I followed up with, back in July or August, with Dennis Randolph, the city traffic engineer, and he said it would not impact the traffic patterns either in the current layout or in the future layout, because they're both relatively, you know, very seldom-used roadways, and they don't offer any connectivity.
And just to follow up on that, so there's sort of the, that language about the traffic pattern that differs from the language in the street vacation policy. And I'm just going to read it for the record, I think. So if the proposed, in Section 4 outreach, if the proposed vacation is for an improved right-of-way that has at least some public use beyond those requesting the vacation, the applicant is required to use the public participation plan, end quote. So which, you go by the traffic engineer language, but how do you, I guess, how do you make those work?
Was the item you read from the policy?
Yeah.
Yep. The policy states that, and then it's the public participation policy itself. There's a table of the different types of actions that move forward, and that's where it is. Understanding the policy itself directs you to that document. Looking at that, I determine that the document is what we would follow.
Thank you.
The document being the public participation policy itself.
Good question. Any other clarifying questions?
I did have one, sorry. If the, if the project ends up not going forward further and the streets have been vacated, what is their status in the interim? I mean, does the city maintain them as streets if the arena is not built for five years, 10 years?
Once they're vacated, the city wouldn't have any responsibility to maintain them. However, there is, you know, the, I believe the very last step is to remove the, it's tied to the Act 51, decertify the street. So there wouldn't be unless perhaps through the easements or closing, perhaps there was some agreement. But I'm not aware of any discussion or thought about that currently.
Okay.
I have a question. With utilities that are under, that are underneath the ground, how will they affect, like, when you have to vacate and have those moved? How will those affect the current businesses that are there? Are they already on those lines? Or are those lines not being used by the current businesses that sit in that area?
Yep. All of the businesses or structures that connect to the right-of-ways in question are not connected to the utilities. They're, they're all vacant. Now, the other users outside of it, through any utility work managed through the city, there's any number of types of coordination to make sure that service isn't interrupted. I can't speak too coherently how that is done, but there would, there would have to be a final engineering plan in place to relocate that. And part of that would include how and when disconnects happen so that there is as limited as possible interruption to any, any users. Something, for example, is of recent, Parkview Avenue has been repaved, and a lot of utility work has occurred under there, or Ransom Street. It would be a very similar process that would be coordination between the developer and the engineering team and the city of Kalamazoo's staff to work out all the minutia of that work. And the preliminary meetings is the, you know, hey, if we put a pipe this size, is there room? You know, all of that is what's looking at the West Nidge/Water Street corridor to remove what's in Cooley and Eleanor. So in a sense, that through the work, through any utility work, the city would work to make sure there's the most limited possible interruption to users. And with it as well, I, I'm not exactly privy to all the utility work that would occur with the two-way conversion, but I believe a lot of that is already being planned with the two-way conversion as well.
Any other clarifying comments? Any other clarifying comments? If not, then I'll take a motion to start discussion. A motion to recommend, that we recommend, motion to recommend approval of the street vacation of Cooley Court, Cooley Street. Sorry, wrong job. Of Cooley Street from Eleanor to Kalamazoo Avenue to the City Commission, with the condition that the easement for public and private utilities be provided, and that they include surface access to be maintained to other public rights-of-way for county staff parking lot at 411 West Kalamazoo Avenue.
Well, I will move that we provide a favorable recommendation to the City Commission for the vacation of that specific part of Cooley Street with the two conditions as stated.
All right, motion by Burgess is their second. Second. Second by Patelco. All right. Any discussion?
Well, I'll start it off. I would just say that the case has been made well. The fact that the negligible impact on, on traffic and all the other boxes checked. Public safety has no concerns. And the project itself is consistent with master plan. And so I believe it works.
Any other comments?
I do wish there was a little more effort in the public engagement, even if it was voluntary and not required. That would make me just feel like, I mean, they have plenty of opportunity through our process, but it's not as specific. And I wish there was some increased public engagement.
Any other discussion? Comment? A few years ago, we put together this street vacation policy because a lot of these street vacations were coming in, decisions were being made kind of ad hoc. We were just like, oh, sounds good, whatever. And so we put together these list of seven items. I don't believe this is in the zoning ordinance, but I think it's, it's a policy that sort of guides our decision-making. And it's been helpful in situations like this. And in my opinion, as presented by the staff report, this meets those requirements. So anything else? All right, with that, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Sorry. Burgess?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
DeSenzo?
No.
Milliken?
Yes.
Patelco?
Yes.
All right. Then we will now move to PC 2023.07, Vacating Eleanor Streets Between North Park Street and Northwestnidge Avenue. We'll hear the staff report.
Thank you. One thing I'm glad, putting this together and all the streets, I, so far I haven't picked up that I've interchanged the wrong street name anywhere. Moving on, this next request is for the stretch of Eleanor within the block there. Again, you can see the zoom-in of the original plat there, the, the stretch of Eleanor Street. Arcadia Creek was called Spring Run at that point there. So to clarify again in the bigger context, I, I did not put the, just recently, favorable recommendation on the Cooley Street there, but you can see where Eleanor fits in to the bigger picture there and the vacated portion there below. Not much to add there. It's the portion between Park and, North Park and Northwestnidge. Park being on the right to the east, Northwestnidge being on the west to the left side there. Here is the view of Eleanor Street looking west. I'm standing about in Park Street earlier today. You can see the Kalamazoo County parking lot to the right or the north. And to the south is parking that is, I believe, Ellis Parking leases it from the property owner, and those are on a 30-day lease. So while they, they do have access either through the easement, there isn't any long-term permanent commitment there. And this is another view of Eleanor Street over by Westnidge, looking back to the east there. You can see the courthouse sneaking behind the tree there and the hotel. To the right is a vacant fenced-off lot and, which is to the south. And to the left, the north, is a construction staging area for the county courthouse. All the parcels along this stretch of Eleanor are owned by CD Arena, including the northern half of the previously vacated Cooley Street. So here again is the zoning map. You can see how Eleanor Street fits in. Again, if the vacation was approved and the land assembled into one parcel, the majority of the zoning would become the zoning of the entire parcel, which puts this in the D2 Zone District. Again, we can see the existing land use map a little bit dated there due to some vacancies of the property now. And the northeast corner there is the county parking lot. And the, the blue is just a rendering for us to, to map these for, for these maps. And the future land use again reflects this entire quadrant of the northwest portion of downtown within the downtown zoning. You'll want to reference the key on the right where the, the label has the, the current zoning. So the, or darker purple there is, reflects the downtown zoning. And here is an aerial of the property. You can see how each parcel maintains its access. And the center one would be absorbed and is owned by CD Arena. And it's currently the surface road of Cooley that was already vacated anyways. And to go over the rationale again, very, very similar to the last one. The applicant owns all of the adjacent parcel. Each parcel maintains its adjacency to the right-of-way. And the one in the center there could be combined or absorbed through the eventual parcel combination if approved. The access for the parking lot, again, which has another entry to the south on Eleanor here, will be maintained and vacated. The applicant has agreed to a condition to provide surface access in the easements being sought by the purchase agreement with the county. And similarly, again, there's water, storm, and sanitary infrastructure under Eleanor. That capacity again would be relocated on the perimeter. I believe Commissioner Burgess mentioned the different departments that looked at that. Part of that evaluation is to make sure a big use would go here and that there's sufficient capacity for the correct number of fire hydrants and all those things to service a building of, of this capacity. City departments have reviewed the request and are in support of it. The city will perform coordinated infrastructure improvements to partner with the public utility routes, which will increase capacity. This coordinated upsizing will benefit all system users and future growth even beyond this project associated with the request to vacate. This work will occur prior to the final two-way conversion of Kalamazoo Avenue. Eleanor Street extends a few blocks to the east. It goes one block east of the mall to Coopson's Alley, I believe is what they call that little segment there. So that's about two or three blocks. It ends at the festival site. Eleanor to the west is a residential street that tapers off to a little exit out to Michikau, which will have some redesign through the two-way conversion and kind of settles off into some real narrow one-ways in Allen Boulevard and a heavy residential area. Kind of brings you either to head out west through the heavier traffic or sprinkles you down to Michigan Avenue. So either direction does not, you know, provide much connectivity to the rest of downtown. In regard to that, the east-west connectivity is still maintained for non-auto users through the trail easement along the creek to the south. So while this segment could create a block to move around, half a block to the south is the easement's in place for the path along the creek. This is not a high-traffic street and is classified as a neighborhood street, and there's sufficient capacity in the surrounding area if the street is vacated. And again, Traffic Engineer Randolph's analysis is based off of current traffic patterns and the proposed through the two-way conversion. And the action by the Planning Commission will make it possible for the City Commission to review with reviewing and voting on the formal vacation of this portion of the Eleanor Street right-of-way. And if there's any clarifying questions about this segment, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this? All right, then we'll invite the applicant. Do you have anything else to add? No? Okay, great. Then we will open the public hearing for PC 2023.07, Vacating Eleanor Street. If anyone has anything they'd like to say, please come forward. Same rules, state your name, address. All right, seeing no one. I guess we're a little... I'll just state that if you are watching and you'd like to call 888-382-9556.
No calls.
No calls. Okay. Then we will close the public hearing. Any clarifying questions? If not, then we'll look for a motion. Once again, very similar.
Chair Milliken?
Yeah.
I have a clarifying question. I'm not sure if I can ask that, or do I need to come up?
Well, you would need to come up and we've closed the public hearing, I'm sorry.
No, there's mine.
Yeah. We, same motion as last time, same conditions. We need a motion to recommend to the City Commission approval of the street vacation of Eleanor Street between Park and Westnidge with the two conditions. One, that the easements for public and private utilities be provided. And two, that they include surface access be maintained for other public rights-of-way to the county staff parking lot at 411 West Kalamazoo Avenue. Someone like to make that motion?
I will make the same motion that we make a favorable, favorable recommendation to the City Commission, this time about the specific areas of Eleanor Street with the same two conditions.
Great. Motion by Burgess is their second.
Second.
Second by Chambers. All right. Any discussion? Doesn't have to be.
Well, I'd just say that the, the same arguments apply and the same explanations.
I will repeat the same. It meets the standards of the street vacation policy, in my opinion, and I agree with what's in the staff report. Seeing nothing else, can we get a roll call vote?
Burgess?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
DeSenzo?
No.
Milliken?
Yes.
Patelco?
Yes.
The motion passes. I, I did refer to the bylaws. When there's five for a quorum, it's the majority of the members at the meeting is the decision.
Great. Thank you for that. All right, that ends our public hearings. No additional action items, so City Planner's report.
There is no City Planner's report today.
All right. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Please, if so, please come forward. And same as the public hearing, just, you'll have three minutes. Ask that you state your name and address and share what, share what you think. And if, while she's coming up, if anyone calling or anyone watching online would like to call in with non-agenda items, 888-382-9556.
My name is Nicole Triplet, and I have been a resident on the south side of Kalamazoo since, since I was nine years old. I have been a psychologist within the community since 2018, working with our children. I'm here on behalf of my nonprofit, Black Wall Street Kalamazoo. I would like to talk to you, give you information about our new purchase that was made possible through the ARBR grant funds. Truth in Parks Innovator Exchange Building was purchased at 1019 Miller Road, a meeting place named after two of the most influential Black women leaders, Sojourner Truth and Rosa Parks. Our priority is African-American business owners, businesses, or individuals wanting to collaborate with Black business owners. We teach business courses and connect entrepreneurs to resources to thrive. We are here to help African-Americans gain generational wealth and take some burden off of the government. We want to emulate Black culture, which is innovation, influence, creativity, joy, resilience, and resourcefulness. Black Wall Street Kalamazoo, we build community for our entrepreneurs. Our tagline is innovation, education, and collaboration. Thank you for the ARBR grant that made the building purchase possible. We understand that zoning to residential changings, changes are underway for this property. And we hope that we are able to maintain current zoning variance or special permit to move further with this project at is, as we believe it is in line and in vision of Imagine Kalamazoo. I do have our architect here, Nelson Ave.
Nelson Ave, Architect, 610 West South Street. This is a sketch of the future site plan. The building was a former appliance store, George's Appliance Store. It was there for years. Before that, it was a greenhouse. It's right next to the post office on Miller Road. The reason we're here tonight is because the city's planning has, is going to change this site to multi, multi-residential. And right now, it's, it's zoned the same as downtown commercial, or similar to. We would like to, of course, use this as a commercial property because Ms. Triplet just bought it under the thinking that it was a commercial property, or still is.
Can you give the address one more time?
It varies, 11, 1911 to 1120.
Yeah, I think 1019.
10, 1019, okay. All right. Thank you.
Once again, Commissioners. My name is Iris Potter. I live at 1204 Manor. I'm here to talk to you about a couple of votes and recommendations to the City Commission that you're going to be doing here in the next couple months. And the first one is to vote on and recommend on the zoning updates. Specifically, I wanted to address the fact that people have loudly spoken during the meetings, during the time before this, that they want the property at Stadium and Drake to remain as residential and not community commercial. Staff had recommended that it go to large commercial, but people spoke out very loudly, as you know, and staff pulled back on that. So we presume that that will be that way when you vote. The second is the new rezoning request, excuse me, from Drive and Shine for the now one parcel at 4301 Stadium Drive. Again, we went through this in 2020, and people spoke loudly that they did not want large commercial again, and that they want this land to remain as residential. So we have a situation where, once again, out here, people are loudly saying, we want this land to remain residential. And so I'm here to urge you, and it seems logical, to vote, to deny... And so I'm here to urge you, and it seems logical, to vote to deny the zoning request of Drive and Shine, based on the fact that the people in our community want to protect our Asylum Lake Preserve. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Tom Howes, I live at 2716 Mockingbird Drive. Echoing the last speaker's comments, I'm here to propose City Planning relocate an upcoming meeting regarding that rezoning of Stadium and Drake, 4301 Stadium Drive, to a larger location, large enough to accommodate level of participation projected by previous meetings in 2020 and earlier this year. Common sense reasons to relocate if this meeting does take place, public safety concerns, fire codes, exit blocking, et cetera. We had standing room only here in 2020 with people sitting on stairs all the way down outside. Be an equal opportunity for the public to attend in person per Michigan's Open Meetings Act, and accommodations for people that may require seating over long periods of time. So you have two months theoretically to consider this and find a new venue. And Agenda Item J is the, your opportunity to comment, so I ask and hope that there's some real-time discussion on this concern. There are many real-world examples of this taking place here in the U.S., so I'm going to bore you now and read a bunch with my remaining time. So 2017, next City Council meeting moves to Michigan Theater for the second time, that's Jackson TV reporting. We are expecting even larger crowd than last time, we were caught off-guard at our last meeting, and we don't want this to happen again. Good reason. 2022, Hungry Horse News, River Highlands Meeting Proposed, postponed after capacity crowd overflow, City Hall. 2017, Walla Walla City Council Meeting Moves to Larger Venue. We are moving to a meeting to better accommodate the public, who we may anticipate higher interest in this, in attending this meeting. 2018, Growing Attendance Prompt, City Council to Pick Larger Meeting Venue. The current county fire department said this creates hazardous conditions by obstructing emergency exits, potentially exposing the city to unnecessary liability in the event of some type of disaster. 2018, Washington County Commission Moving to a Larger Venue. So many people came out to express their concerns over an ongoing sewer dispute between Washington and the state of Marriott, they will be moving to a facility large enough to accommodate more people. 2022, Montclair Local News in New Jersey, overcrowding space causes mid-council meeting move. These are headlines I'm reading, by the way. 2014, Bay City News, Berkeley City Council Meeting Moving to a Larger Venue. And I have two more pages that I can hopefully share with you after the meeting. So again, I hope to hear your comments regarding this, this concern on Item J. Thank you.
Any other comments? Anything online?
Good evening caller, you are on with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission for public comment.
Hi, my name is Tina McClinton. I live on Lake Street, I live in South Town neighborhood. In the rezoning, you have the little green space from Lake to Stockbridge. Now, we've only, we've already flooded twice this year, two times. When you take this green space away, you're going to make flooding so much worse to build, to put your 55-car parking lot in your 36 Hawthorne Project apartment. Why can't you build the Hawthorne Projects at the old DHS building? We don't need any more parking lots in our neighborhood, for we already flood, and you all know that. Greg, you work at Bronson Hospital, you know how much we flood around here. Why would you want to make it worse for us? We, we are a poor neighborhood who struggles to make ends meet. I work two jobs to be able to replace my furnace, to be, it's no fun to be trapped by nasty sewage water, nasty water from the river and everywhere else. It's no fun to be trapped in, guys. If you were trapped in, you would feel the same way, but you've never felt this feeling, so you don't know how it feels. So please, with this new rezoning, leave our little green space alone. We need it to survive, and so does the animals. It shouldn't always be about money, it shouldn't always be about build, 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 and how big can we build. Yes, people do need homes, I agree 100%, but not in a floodplain, not without fixing any issues. You can't even put the sewers over there, you have to run them to Lake Street, which the sewers on Lake Street don't work, and neither does the storm drains, they haven't worked for seven years. I know this is just going through one ear and out the other, but this is our homes that I'm talking about. This is our livelihood that we've worked all our life for. My husband died in my home. You won't offer me a good price of money for it, but yet you want to build and flood me out even more. Everyone, the zoning meeting is October 16th at 7:00 at City Hall. I'm quite sure all the City Commission will say yes, because they always all vote yes, they never say no. Thank you, bye.
Okay, thank you all very much. City Commission Liaison Comments, Commissioner Pradel.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you'll just entertain a special wish here during my comment tonight. I was hoping to take a very brief, just moment of silence. City lost two very young children last night in a house fire, little four-year-old named Evelyn, a seven-year-old named Elliot, who passed away in a fire in Stockbridge. So we could just take a moment, just to have a moment of silence for them. Thank you. Also wanted to just acknowledge our men and women of our public safety. You can imagine how difficult those situations would be responding to a serious house fire in general, but certainly, whenever there's loss of life, there's a toll taken on them as well, and so want to keep the loved ones of both of those kiddos and our men and women of public safety in our thoughts tonight. Wanted to provide a couple of updates from our last City Commission meeting. One of the changes, we have a rare schedule change at the last minute for City Commission. So one of the changes that's going to be noticeable here is in our charter, it says that new City Commissioners, we swear them in the first Monday after Election Day, which is very fast for general elections. But due to Prop 2 and some changes in allowing overseas military voters a chance to get their votes in, they have to allow six extra days to get those in after Election Day. So therefore, we can't officially certify the election a little bit longer than usual because of those votes coming in. So how that will change things, we won't have the City Commission and the new mayor voted in, I'm sorry, sworn in on the typical Monday after Election Day, it's going to actually happen, there will be two business meetings on November 20th. So we'll have a 5:00 meeting, which will be an official business meeting, where the swearing-in ceremony will happen, and then there will be a usual business meeting at 7:00 PM on November 20th. So basically, our next meeting, which is October 16th, is the last meeting of the 54th City Commission, so we won't be back together again until November 20th. So I wanted to provide that update. Also, you folks have worked incredibly hard on a lot of the zoning changes and map changes, and we had our first reading, and we scheduled our public hearing for the next meeting, October 16th, for the ordinances approving the text amendments, Chapter 15 zoning, the Appendix A zoning, and the updates to the zoning map. So thanks for all your work on that as well, but definitely keep an eye at that next meeting on the 16th. Wanted to make sure to also recognize Election Day is coming up on November 7th, and I would encourage folks to check out a website from the League of Women Voters, it's called vote411.org. It enables you to kind of shop and compare candidates and issues. On the ballot this year, we have mayor, city commissioners, ranked choice voting, and also a Veterans Melange Request as well. So if you get a chance to check that out, you can also around town find the League's Voter Guide as well to learn about the issues and candidates. And lastly, just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to serve as liaison. Certainly, we don't know how things will shake out in the month ahead, but it has been an honor to work with you folks and report between you and communicate between each other over the last couple of years, and it has been a joy to work with you and wish you all the best. So thank you so much, have a great night.
All right, Planning Commissioner comments? Any Planning Commissioner comments? Just for Ms. Triplet and Mr. Naev, if you, I would encourage you to talk to staff or to Mr. Pradel here after the meeting. We've already made our recommendation on the rezoning and the zoning ordinance amendments, so there's not a whole lot that we can do on that particular case, but as Mr. Pradel just stated, the City Commission still hasn't voted yet. It's a Hail Mary, but you still have that Hail Mary toss, and so I would encourage you to talk with staff and see what those, that play might look like as you draw it up. And then for Commissioner Pradel, thank you as well. I mean, like you said, we don't know what the next several weeks look like, but this is the best communication and coordination we've had in my tenure here, so thank you. With that, seeing nothing and having exhausted the agenda, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
You're welcome.